I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Chris, could you call the roll please?
Mrs. Detsel.
Here.
Mr. Harlow.
Here.
Mr. Ether.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Mr. Detsel.
Here. Would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everyone's received a copy of the meeting minutes from October 23rd. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any additions or corrections? Chris? Motion passes five to zero. Tonight, we have Kevin Kane here for some teacher recognition. Kevin?
Yes, substituting for Kevin tonight will be Bethany Miller from Northwest High School.
Kevin, you look great tonight!
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bethany Miller. I'm the vice president of the Northwest Association of Educators, and I'm here tonight to recognize three exceptional teachers. So if those three teachers would come on up, Ashley, Richard, and is Sarah here? Yes. Okay. And is Robin here as well? Okay, awesome. Okay. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about each of these three teachers. They were all nominated by their colleagues to receive this award. So it's a special thing when the other teachers and staff in your building recognize the excellent work that you're doing. So I have some people who could not be here. I'm going to be sharing what they had to say about these people. And then we have a couple people who are here to present along with me. So we're going to talk about Ashley first, Ashley Hotop, who teaches at Northwest High School with me. And she was selected to receive this award last spring, but due to some scheduling conflicts and her coaching responsibilities, this is the first time we were able to make it work. So she was actually nominated by two of her colleagues. The first was Ally Timmers, who is our, one of our Butler Tech teachers at Northwest. And this is what Ally had to say about Ashley. Ashley and I co-teach a foods class for the students in the sales, tops, and social skills units. She has taught me so much about differentiation and how to modify the curriculum for students with special needs. Each semester, our class hosts a teacher lunch in which the students greet and serve the teachers after learning customer service skills in class, skills that they can use in a job after high school. Ashley has also started the best buddies club to help the students in the units connect with other students in the school and to bring an awareness to just how wonderful the students in the unit programs are. Ashley spends an abundant amount of time and energy in making sure each of her students are successful and that the material is delivered to them in a level that is appropriate for each one of them. It is obvious that she put her whole heart into her job. On top of what Ashley does during the school day, she's also the assistant tennis coach and has another part-time job. She is ambitious, loving fun, and only wants the best for her students. She has not only been a blessing to these kids, but also to me. It is a pleasure to call her a coworker and a friend. And the second nomination came from Kelly Moncay, who's here tonight, and she's going to read what she said.
Hi. Yeah, I work with Ashley in the social skills unit. I'm a speech pathologist, so I'm in there supporting her students. Even though, and when I wrote this, it was only her second year of teaching, but now she's in her third, she does a great job running her social skills classroom. She's helped her students make positive gains in their academic and social skills. She co-teaches a foods class, and the students serve at least one lunch to teachers during the year. This allows students in all the special education units the opportunity to complete job skills. Ashley is also a tennis coach at the high school. She started a buddy club to foster interaction between regular education students and students in the special education classrooms. Many of her special education students, as well as many of her tennis players, have signed up to participate in the buddy club. It was a big success, and all the students involved really seemed to enjoy it. She was also instrumental in getting a sensory room at Northwest High School that students from all the units can utilize. The room has been very beneficial in decreasing classroom behaviors. I've been very impressed by Ashley. She's always looking for ways to improve the academic, job, and social skills of her students. She has a great energy and a positive person to work with. She interacts well with her colleagues and is a problem solver. I highly recommend Ashley for this award due to her positive influence and her initiative to foster relationships and understanding between all students.
Okay, next up, we have Richard Ferris. He teaches chemistry at Colrain High School, and he was nominated by Kim Bun. She couldn't be here tonight, but I want to share with you guys what she had to say about Richard. She says, "I have been very impressed with Rich Ferris. Over the past few years, I have seen him build good relationships with students and take chances on kids as well. For example, there was a student that did fine in his advanced chemistry class, but really wanted to take the AP course. Mr. Ferris talked to me, the student, and the parent, explaining that he may not get an A or B in the course, but if this student felt that it was in his career path, that he would work with him in the AP course. He then followed through the following year tutoring the student after school so that he wouldn't fail the course. The student, who was once passionate about chemistry, realized that it wasn't a strength and has since been successful in a different career pursuit in college, and mentioned to me that he was thankful that Mr. Ferris gave him that opportunity. Moreover, Mr. Ferris is a fantastic teacher. Ever since he has taken over the AP chemistry course, our AP scores have steadily been increasing in the number of students taking the course and the number of students that have received a three-year hire on the test." She says, "Thank you for being such a great educator." Congratulations. Everybody's getting a certificate and a $50 gift card to use for supplies in our classroom. Our last recipient teaches in our preschool program at the Houston Early Learning Center. Sarah Mills was nominated by fellow teacher Robin Hustler, and Robin is going to share her thoughts about Sarah.
Hi, I'm Robin Hustler. I'm a preschool itinerary teacher, so I have the pleasure of going into the classroom and working with Sarah along with the students in her classroom. Sarah Mills is a preschool teacher at the Houston Early Learning Center. This is Sarah's second year as a preschool classroom teacher with the Northwest Local School District. Prior to coming to Northwest, she worked as a special education assistant in a kindergarten and first grade self-contained classroom at Princeton City Schools. While there, she was awarded Support Staff Member of the Year at Evendale Elementary. She also worked as a preschool classroom assistant at Children's and was a co-lead teacher in a three- and four-year classroom at a child development program in New Orleans. Sarah is a great asset to the Northwest local schools. She teaches a class of preschool-aged children, including children with special needs. She always greets the children at the door, and the kids love coming to see her. Her calm demeanor and voice create a comforting atmosphere for the children during their preschool experience. Sarah collaborates with her assistant and other staff members to meet the needs of each child. The Houston Early Learning Center is a better place because of teachers like Sarah Mills.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just like to take a quick second to congratulate all three of you. Our students are very lucky to have each of you here. Thank you very much, and congratulations on your award. Okay, we will move into legislative update. Michael?
Yes, the only thing I have tonight is House Bill 200 is making its way through the House. It's an education deregulation bill that would expand vouchers to be a statewide program, and the School Board Association is lining people up to speak out against that. And House Bill 200, and that's probably the item of greatest concern going through Columbus at the moment, so.
Okay, thank you. Do you have Butler Tech?
Yeah, just one thing. Our Butler Tech board meeting is tomorrow night, so I don't have an update on that. But I just wanted to say that last week, we were at the Ohio School Boards Convention up in Columbus, and just one thing, I was asked to be on the Ohio School Boards Association Audit Committee, so we had our meeting, a couple meetings a year, so. Once we get the second one done, then I'll come back and report about it.
Okay. Okay, we'll move into special report.
Yes, tonight, we have our cultural competency and equity report. Dr. Chris Lynn Turney and Dr. Monique Johnson will report on themes and outcomes from the district focus groups, as well as an outline of next steps as the district moves forward to develop a diversity plan.
Thank you very much. First of all, good evening, and I'd like to issue several thank yous. First of all, to our superintendent, Mr. Bowling, as well as our administrative cabinet and our school board. Thank you for allowing us to, first of all, study this topic, research it, and involve our parents, our students, as well as our teachers in such a topic that we are very passionate about. Recently, I attended a diversity conference, and one of the speakers said that diversity is a very uncomfortable topic. And so while we will probably feel uncomfortable through this process, as well as the processes to follow, we should feel safe. And so hopefully, in this process with our teachers, as well as our students and community members, hopefully, while they may have felt uncomfortable about the topic, that they still felt very safe. And I hope that we can pass that along to our school board, as well as our AO cabinet team, as we go further in this particular discussion. So with that in mind, I'd also like to thank and recognize our community members and parents, many of whom are attending board meetings for the very first time, because they saw that this was a topic that needed special attention. And so last spring, they started attending, and they have continued to attend. So thank you for leading the charge, as well as paving the way for this very important discussion, and hopefully, this will continue to open doors, and we will see it through the completion and the development of a diversity plan for our district, as well as full implementation and follow-through as the years go on. So with that in mind, I would like to turn this over to Dr. Monique Johnson. She and I have been working together closely on this since last spring. She is our hire consultant, and so in the processes of the focus groups, she pretty much led the charge as the facilitator, and I acted as the co-facilitator. So a lot of the information that she is sharing has come from the reports and information some I'm hearing for the first time, because many of these reports were well over 200 pages each. So there is a lot of information that we got from this, and so she's pretty much going to facilitate this evening's discussion, and I'll be popping in and out. So at this time, Dr. Monique Johnson.
Good evening. Good to be back again. Again, I'm Dr. Monique Johnson, and I am an independent consultant, passionate about diversity and inclusion issues. I've been teaching and doing work in that area for quite some time, and it's been a pleasure to connect with Northwest. I don't live in the district, so I'm an outsider, and in some ways, that's good, because I'm not as familiar with people and schools and so on and so forth. And I've met some great students, and I'm looking forward to a continued partnership. So I'm going to just give you a situational analysis from my point of view, what was shared with me, being an outsider, and why I think this is valuable, why it's important, and so on. Okay. So the situational analysis is based on limited information, again, provided through discussions with the district representatives and prior student and community survey results that I looked at, as well as some special education profile reports that I, that are viewed. As communicated to me, the district had some legal issues with African-American students and families a few years back, and they felt that they did not receive due process. As a result, there was a symposium that occurred. I'm sure you all know, I'm not telling you anything that you don't know already. And there was some dialogue about diversity issues, inclusion, and education. And although a step in the right direction, a diversity plan was never actually created and implemented. After a review of the Northwest Local School District's special ed profile, disproportionality in specific areas is also a concern. I did review those documents. The number of students from diverse backgrounds, primarily African-American students identified as needing IEPs, and those with IEPs who are suspended, is significant. Considering the enrollment percentages of diverse students and economically disadvantaged students, the focus groups further support that there are very important diversity needs in the district that are not being addressed among students and staff. And the focus group results will provide a perspective for the diversity strategic plan. Again, this is a peripheral analysis that does not capture the depth of the issues and concerns of the district or the administration, but just my quick analysis of the issues. So as far as the focus groups go, what is the purpose of the focus groups? Focus groups, the purpose of the focus groups was to obtain feedback from students, staff, and parents about their perceptions, opinions, beliefs, feelings, reactions, and experiences at Northwest Local School District. The focus groups are a form of qualitative research that reveal more information than a standard questionnaire. We get numbers with standard questionnaires and percentages, but we wanted to hear people's thoughts and opinions and feelings. So the groups ranged in size from four to 12 participants, and the focus groups are intended to be small in order to maximize sharing. Northwest expressed an interest in gaining greater insight, and focus groups are a great way to do that, so that was my role for this initiative. Okay, the focus group structure. I served as the principal consultant and facilitator of all eight of the focus groups that we had, and Dr. Turney worked alongside of me. She really didn't do much talking. She did some introduction in the beginning, but she didn't do much talking. I did most of the talking, and I was provided with the focus group names, participant names, scheduling, communicating with principals was Dr. Turney's role. She'll talk a little bit more about that, but the assistant, she was the assistant, and her role as the assistant was taking notes and managing the audio recording, which did and did not work all the time. It worked the majority of the time. And she introduced me, you know, as a district representative, made people, I think, feel a little more comfortable, because I wasn't just an outsider coming in. So that was the structure for the most part. Okay. Okay, so themes. We basically gathered a series of themes from the focus groups. Okay, that was the data. Just a quick aside, again, this is a form of qualitative research, and it's called phenomenology. I don't want to get too technical, but it's called phenomenology, and it's learning the meaning of an experience for a group of people. So the groups were certified staff, parents, classified staff, students, okay? And so identifying the themes is one of the most common forms of analysis in qualitative research. Qualitative research looks at small groups to guide support of a particular hypothesis. We didn't really come up with a specific hypothesis, but we did gather a variety of different themes. The themes essentially are patterns within data that can be grouped into categories. So you'll see as we go on that we'll identify some of those. But the themes are essentially our data. The words are our data. And we asked a series of questions, and we asked the same questions of all the student groups. We asked the same questions of the certified and classified staff. So we didn't vary the questions. So in essence, several messages were identified as important, and which we will tell you about. I think that's it for now.
So the next piece I'm going to share with you, participant data in regards to our certified staff, as well as our classified staff. So the first group we met with was our certified staff. In total, there were 22 participants, 21 female, one male. And of that breakdown, 20 were white, one Hispanic, one multiracial. Then we broke it down by years in the district. We had two participants less than five years in the district. We then had three participants between five and 10 years, 11 participants more than 10 years in the district, and then finally, six participants more than 20 years in the district. So how this process worked was, we pretty much did a random selection of our certified staff, and you'll see the same for our classified staff, parents, and students. We got a list of our classified, certified staff members, and we did random selections. Now, many of our staff members were familiar with the process, and some asked to be a part. So there was a combination of random selection, as well as those who had presented themselves as being interested and wanting to participate in this particular study. So Dr. Johnson contacted them via letters, emails, phone calls, and things like that. With our classified and certified staff, the thing that Dr. Johnson reported to me as a question or concern was that many of our certified and classified staff members asked, "Why am I being called, and who's going to find out if I show up?" And we had several who decided not to participate, because they were fearful of being singled out or someone knowing that they were going to be a part of this particular focus group. We also had staff members who attended who felt very comfortable, but they were very slow to respond initially until others started to speak out, and then they felt safe, and then they began to share their opinion. So I wanted to share that piece, because we had to call several people before we even made our focus groups, because some did not respond at all, or others responded and said that they didn't want to participate, because they were fearful of any potential ramifications for participating and sharing their ideas. Next was our classified staff. We had this in two different groups. So first of all, not our classified staff, excuse me, our certified staff was two different groups, classified staff just one group. There were 11 total participants. The breakdown, seven females and four males, eight white, three African-American, three five or fewer years in the district, three five to 10 years in the district, three more than 10 years in the district, and then we had two who were in, who were in the district for more than 20 years. And so we liked that combination, because as Dr. Johnson went through the themes, she was able to kind of identify with some of the people who said, "I haven't been in the district very long, but here's what I've seen." And then others have been, were very forward in saying, "I've been in the district for 20 years, and here's what I've continued to see." So I'm glad we broke it down in this particular respect. So at this time, Dr. Johnson's going to come back and share with you themes from those groups.
One of the things that I didn't share is how we came up with the themes. So in general, if more than one person shared similar perspective, words, thoughts, that's, it became a theme. If it was more than one, if it was at least two people or more, then that's how we identified it as a potential theme. Okay? And that's across settings. So which meant that it could use further attention. Okay, so we have several themes that were identified for the classified and certified staff. The first was low morale. There was quite a bit of conversation around low morale. I'm going to read one little excerpt from the transcripts. All of the focus groups were transcribed, and so this is one excerpt from a certified staff member to give you some perspective. "As teachers, when you're sitting and talking, there's some feeling that every year, they're just trying new things all the time, but no one higher up is listening to what teachers are saying, what they're saying in the rooms. I think they feel that their voice isn't heard. What they consider to be working and not working is discounted." So that's one excerpt. Lack of diversity among staff, that was an overarching theme across several different groups, across races. It wasn't just one particular race saying that we need more diversity. It was, you know, they were from all different backgrounds. So this is another, just a quick excerpt. I'm not going to read an excerpt for everyone, but I just wanted to pull a couple of them out for you. "Our staff population is not diverse. I'm not even sure how to..." Some of the things were inaudible, so if it seems like I'm cutting off sentences, then I am, because they weren't all audible, the words weren't. Okay. "I'm not even sure how to..." dot, dot, dot. "Everybody is always walking around issues. I feel like that that need to be addressed, because we're too worried about offending the next person to bring up an actual issue. It's not a comfortable conversation for a lot of people, and I feel like there's just a lot of avoidance around dealing with it because of that. We don't want to acknowledge that all of our teachers are white, middle-class, inexperienced, white privilege. You can't say that, even that, even though that affects the way we interact with our kids. We just can't say that." And that comes from a certified, certified staff person. We have administrative, office does not listen, positive mentor support, favorable building level support in relationships. So the last one, they basically said that they felt very supported by their administration and the staff and the principals and so forth, and among their peers. They felt as though they had good relationships with their peers. Certified staff feel devalued. I have a quote from a custodian. He said, "I'm relatively new to the district. I was somewhere else for 15 years, but I don't like what I'm seeing." That was from a custodian. Be proactive, not reactive. Relatively good, good race relations among staff. Social skills and counseling support needed. Cultural competence and professional development training needed, and parental engagement and outreach.
So on the topic of parents, the next piece was a parent focus group, in which, again, we sent letters, we sent out various methods of communication, and we received some interest back. For our parent group, it was, in fact, all African-American. There were nine females, one male, total of 10 participants, 10, all 10 African-American. For K through 12 in the district, there were seven. K through 12 children attending the district, as well as schools elsewhere, three. Community members with current students, there were 10, and community members with former students or graduates of the district, there were three. So at this time, Dr. Johnson's going to talk about the themes from our parent groups.
Okay, so one of the things that was talked about was the fact that there's division within the district, and it seems like there's two different districts. We operate like two different districts. One side, there's a totally different set of rules and norms and culture compared to the other side. And they talked extensively about the dress code issue being implemented one, one side or one school and not on the other. Let me see, I might have a quote to support that. I have so many quotes. Poor consistency and clarity in communication. One of the quotes to support that, I think it's a lack of acknowledging the racial issues that are here. I believe that number eight expressed those longstanding. You have to have the conversation. You have to have that uncomfortable conversation in order to acknowledge that it is a problem. Also, the retention, providing support when you do have an educator that's in the school, providing adequate support. I was excited at one point when there was an African-American principal at the school, excited about that, that there's an African-American athletic director educators there, but when they're gone in less than two years or less than a year, with no real understanding of why that occurred, that's unacceptable. And being a taxpayer in the school district for the past 15 years, I feel that I have a right to express and ask those questions and to get answers. So this was a particularly long group. Long, we had, we met for quite some time. Cultural competency training needed for teachers. Poor representation of diverse staff employed by the district. Parent hiring committee to help with hiring more diverse staff. Here's another quote. I would say that Northwest has always had an issue with diversity. I grew up in Colrain County. I went to Houston Elementary. That was my classroom in second grade. I graduated from Colrain and returned to my home here, and now I send my son to Colrain. It's always been a huge issue, the diversity and dealing with African-Americans in general. It doesn't feel like too much has changed. I'm having issues with my son at Colrain as well. So that's just additional quotes. So that's just additional quotes. Move with a sense of urgency, purposeful priority. The same issue since 1989, not open to change. I believe that was tied in with the quote that I just gave you. Diversity plan should be time bounded and include accountability measures. Parental engagement and discipline lacks consistency.
And so our final focus group was with our students. We met with the students from the three middle schools, White Oak Middle, Colrain Middle, as well as Pleasant Run Middle, and the two high schools, Northwest High School and Colrain High School. The breakdown of total participants were 35, 19 females, 16 males. And of that group, we had four Asian students, 20 African-American students, 11 multiracial. And the breakdown for grades, we had 19 students, grades six through eight, and 16 students, grades nine through 12. And so at this time, Dr. Johnson will come back to speak about those themes we found with our student groups.
Okay, one of the things that the students talked about was wanting more information about their history and race in the classroom as opposed to just learning about slavery, you know, for African-American students. They talked about online registration for free and reduced lunch insensitive. Not everyone has internet. Apparently the system for that is changing. I didn't know a lot, whole lot about that, but that was something that was expressed as a concern. Few if any African-American staff, they don't stay, they're here one day and gone the next. And then a lack of trust, African-American faculty moved out of their roles. Very shady. That was one of what a couple of the students shared. I will share a couple quotes from some of the student groups. They talked about the use of the N-word, getting out of control, and that that needs to be dealt with. The junior high and the high school level students talked about that. A student said, "Sometimes I joke around with the N-word because I think it's funny, but it's not." Last year, some people would get away with it and they'd keep it going and that's something that they would have been, that would have been changed, that they should have more strict, strict rules about bullying. One of the questions that I asked them was whether, whether or not they feel cared about. And actually, some of the students really did feel cared about. I would say the majority of them said that they did feel cared about to some extent. This is one of the quotes that support that. Earlier this week, I was in math class and I was confused and I always make faces for my emotions. And my teacher could tell that I was confused and she came up to me and was asking me what I was confused on. So the fact that the teacher came to help, you know, I felt good about that. As far as the competency and needing more cultural competency for teachers or introducing teachers to that training or for lack of a better word, one of the students shared an assignment that she received that she found to be insensitive. This was a quote from her. "Over the summer, we had summer work, homework, and the way that our teacher worded on the papers, it acted like it was kind of insensitive in a way, like it was like, why does your family like decide, why did your family decide to make the brave trek over here? And for African-Americans, I feel like it wasn't really a choice." So like, my mom kind of had an issue with that, just the way it was, was, even though we, you know, she emailed the teacher and even though her intentions weren't bad, the way she worded it was insensitive. So that's an example of needing cultural competency. Then they talked about the dress code. I thought, you know, you might find this entertaining. They said, "With the whole leggings thing, we talked, the kids talked about leggings because I know that's been an issue." And a student said, "Some people walk down the hallways and you can see their butt out of their shorts and they haven't gotten called down. They walk past teachers and their teachers don't say anything." But Ms., couldn't hear the name, she stays on it. So that has to do with the inconsistency as well, where you have some teachers who are really on it with the dress code and others who are not and students, some students who are wearing things that are not appropriate and do not get addressed and other students who do. So students are very aware of that and it's very frustrating. Oh, did I not finish reading? Oh, yes. Yes, we have another slide. Teacher's bias is based on students' behavior. Some of the students did talk about that, that they feel like if you are really, basically, I remember one quote is a student saying, you know, "Teachers can only take so much. If you're talking a lot and getting on teachers' nerves and, you know, if you're quiet, then you don't get in as much trouble." So bullying needs to be taken more seriously. Nothing is done. Unfair discipline practices and suspensions. Suicide is not taken seriously. Need to know how to direct someone who is suicidal. Actually, in one of our high school groups, we had a young lady who talked about that extensively, actually a couple of people talked about that. And for her, it was very real and the teacher, I guess whoever she went to, didn't really know how to deal with her or where to refer her so that she could get the help that she needed and so. I'm actually a nationally certified counselor and she was like, "Well, can I talk to you?" And I said, "Well, I'm not licensed, I'm just certified." So she was really needing some direction. So, you know, if teachers don't necessarily have to be counselors, but they need to know how to direct or where to direct them or to say something beneficial. Okay, so with the student focus groups, most student common theme, the students feel safe in school. I did ask some questions about safety and if there's procedures in place for them as far as what to do if something happens, and they felt pretty secure and pretty safe. The staff cares and they try hard, but there's a feeling that they just don't know what to do in challenging situations as it pertains to students of color, minority students. And these are the overarching themes that occurred across groups, not one group or another, but these are themes that we heard in the student groups, that we heard in the parent group, that we heard in the teacher, the certified and classified. There's a need for more staff from diverse backgrounds in the district. We need to improve consistency in communication, policies, procedures, and discipline. Cultural competency training for staff is needed. Incorporate the staff in decision-making with regard to curriculum and student needs. Low morale among staff, we need to recognize staff more. I say, "You did that tonight, that's great." But classified staff as well, they're not feeling as appreciated, at least in those that were in the focus group, did not feel appreciated. Engage parents and the community. Be proactive and not reactive. Create a plan, that's what we're working towards now. Provide support systems for ESL students. Address the disproportionality data through programming and innovative strategies. And the last one, commit to diversity efforts. Be accountable and execute.
Okay, so the final piece is our next steps. At our pre-presentation that we did last month, one of the community members' comments was, "I'm very hopeful with all of this information, but I want to see it through. I want to make sure that we are not just talking and that this is something that we are going to implement with fidelity for years to come." So our next step is to develop a diversity committee of teachers, students, parents, as well as committee members, community members, excuse me. We will do this in December 2017. A lot of people have already come forth and they are interested in being a part of that. I will also recruit and identify other members within this next month who want to be a part of this committee. This committee will work to develop the diversity plan. So the second part will be to develop a district-wide diversity plan. We will work on that January through April. And one of the pieces of the district-wide diversity plan will include the recruitment as well as retention of minority candidates. And so we know that the hiring season is typically February to April and sometimes beyond. So the first piece that we will be working on as a committee will be our human resources piece so that we can share that with our administrative cabinet and so that our HR Director, Dr. Stephanie Kessling, can begin to implement those pieces as we move forward in developing the diversity plan as and as we move forward for next school year. The next step will be to report back to the school board, the developed plan, and that will happen in April or May 2018. And then we will begin implementing the plan in the summer. Some of the pieces that Dr. Monique Johnson has identified in themes is the cultural proficiency of our staff members as well as the awareness. So obviously, as we lead into the next school year, we will begin with some type of training for our administrative team first and then moving on to our teacher-certified as well as classified staff. And then follow up with the evaluation in approximately a year. So in December, we will evaluate the first piece of the implementation of the plan and that there will be steps along the way as we continue to implement the plan, modify accordingly as well as continue to share out what we have gained from it as well as what modifications we can make through that process. So that concludes this report. Again, thank you very much for participating, for giving us the opportunity to follow this lead as well as our passion to do this. And we look forward to presenting again in the spring and sharing what we have with our report. Thank you.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Did we make sure that young lady had, was pointed in the right direction?
We did. Dr. Turner got a, there was a brochure with some information on it. And then I also emailed her some information. She never emailed me back, but she gave me her email and I did email her some information.
And I'd like to speak on that for just a second. We had a couple of students who shared very heavy concerns with us. And so while this process was designed to be anonymous, we did report some of those things back to the building administrator when we felt that it was a very heavy issue. For example, one, the students raised a concern about the lunch system and that was coming close like within the next week. So we did contact that building principal to say, "Hey, this has been presented as a concern. Is there something we can do to make sure students have access to updating their free and reduced lunch forms as opposed to expecting them to do it at home if they don't have internet service?" So again, in all of those situations, if there was something very pressing, such as the suicide comment or the issue with the lunch, we made sure that the building administrator knew that right away.
And I did stay and talk with her for about 10 minutes after everybody left.
Thank you.
Couple of comments. Do you guys have any comments you want to make? I had a couple that I wrote down. I just, if you could stay. The first thing that I worry that people will see this report is they will say, "You interviewed 33 total certified and classified out of 1,200 employees." To me, that doesn't matter. If 33 feel this way, that's important. We don't ignore it. Some people might say, "If you looked at the parent list and the student list, it was all African-American parents." Well, some of the white parents may not have seen the reason to come to the meeting because they don't see what's out there. So I have no problem with that at all whatsoever. So until we start recognizing, and we could have sat here and combated everything that was said, that's not, that's not the point of this. The point is to get better and to move on. We've tried to be proactive. Chris Lynn's role has been changed in central office. We are looking at our alternative programs, which are the majority of African-American students. Why is that? Is there things that are going on in our buildings that need to change in order for Northwest Passage to not be inclusive of just all African-American students? Not all, but a large majority, and IEP students and economically disadvantaged students. I do worry about morale. There is a lot of issues in education right now. People were run off, told to get out of education three, four years ago. There's value added. Every year, the state assessment changes. Teachers don't get to do what they got in education. And that's to develop relationships with kids and to do projects and to teach, not to teach to a set of circumstances that doesn't work for our students coming in. People will say, "It's white flight leaving Northwest." That's ridiculous. What it is, is African-American flight coming to a better school district, which is us, to get a better education. And that's what we have to do a better job of and we're not reaching them all. So I take this personally and so does our AO Cabinet, and we will work very hard with this plan to develop a proper plan, one that is inclusive of all students, no matter what their race, religion, so on and so forth. But we have to do a better job. The disproportionality data, it bothers me. It has to change because people will say, "Well, they're acting out because they're coming from a single parent or they're coming from no parents at home." Great, we're the best seven and a half hours they get. If we can get them in some extracurricular activities, we can do more for these kids. So what can we change to get there? So I don't want anyone to make excuses for what was up there. I can't wait to start the groups and the committees. I can't wait for Monica to come back and lead us and Chris Lynn to take the charge with what we're doing. Chris Lynn is currently trying to reestablish or redevelop our alternative school, which is Northwest Passage, to make it more inclusive of a variety of students and not just toward our discipline issues. Why are they discipline issues? Because they're not engaged in class. So until you change instruction and the way they're taught, that's something that we have to do. So everything we do is around interventions and trying to get what we need to do. But I really appreciate your time and what you're doing and thank you for everything you did.
Thank you.
I've got a question for you. First of all, thank you for your, your time and efforts on the report. I work in the medical field and I read a study last week and it shocked me, the results and it sort of, every, reminds me of every place that I've worked, there's always been diversity committees and plans, but nothing ever changes. And the number that I saw last week, and I couldn't believe it, is that there are fewer black men in medical school now than there were in 1978. And I'm like, it's 2%. And I'm like, with all the effort, how could it be going in 40 years? How could it be less? And I don't know if you've got any answers for that.
I don't, I don't, well, you made your theory, I don't have any answers.
So I'm wondering about other professions, law school, teaching, but, but 2% is, it was quite shocking to me. And I thought, you know, of all the efforts, it just seems like it's going backwards.
I mean, I think there are a variety of variables, you know, that could contribute to that. I mean, I could speculate, but...
I think it starts in elementary school and the guidance they're given from there and middle school and high school.
I got something. So thank you very much for, for working on this and I realize that the thank you may be, you know, be the first of many because we do have a lot of steps to get through. It's going to be an ongoing process. You know, I travel around the state a lot for various jobs that I've had. I was sitting here trying to think of, and maybe, maybe you would know, has there been a community that has gone through some kind of process similar to this? I mean, there's all kinds of, I mean, I can name suburb after suburb of, you know, around Columbus, Cincinnati, or Dayton, I mean, just Toledo, the whole, you know, that are, that are going through a lot of diversity issues just like we are. Is there any that really you can say, "Wow, they really, they really turned it around. They really got it right after this arduous process."
Absolutely. So as we know, diversity is ever-changing and evolving, especially in our country and with things going on. So I can't say that there is anyone that will ever get it right, but for the time, absolutely. So early in this process, our district was charged with identifying other districts of similar makeup and what they are doing to recruit, retain minority educators as well as their discipline policies as they pertain to minority students. One of the districts that we were asked to compare ourselves to was Fairfield City Schools. Coincidentally, I worked in Fairfield prior to coming here. And so while I was there, they had already developed a diversity plan, but there was continuous pieces of implementation of that while I was there. So in this process, just as we were kind of getting the overview and the big picture, we definitely did some initial research of Fairfield City Schools. I shared that with our AO Cabinet. And if you ever get a chance to go to their website, they have their equity plan listed there in, on their website as well as the pillars in which they identify the human resources piece, how they recruit and retain minorities, as well as the curricular piece, which addresses some of the concerns that our students raised about how when we talk about races, a lot of it is focused on slavery. There's the ESL There's the ESL piece. All of those things are listed in their particular equity plan. So that's one district in particular. But Dr. Monique Johnson has worked with several, and she can share that information. But we did some research just to see what other districts of our similar demographics are doing, and they are out there working. And it sounds that through that process, they are continuing to evolve and to modify, which is the important piece. We do not want to create a plan and stick it here, and then 10 years later, it's the same exact plan. Because I can tell you, in 10 years from now, even in two years from now, that same plan will not be relevant, because our population continues to change. So with that, if you have anything to say about Lakota and where.
I would add that whatever the plan is, it needs to be embedded into what you do. And so what I mean by that is that we can't have a diversity presentation on Friday where we have some big person, big name person come in, and they come for half a day, and then everybody says, ooh, wow, this is great. And then they leave, and there's nothing else. It needs to be embedded in what you do. And that was one of the things that I, I was working on with Lakota. They actually have a program called Champions for Change, where they actually have identified advocates in each building who are sort of like the diversity advocates. And they, you know, meet with other, the other champions on a monthly basis, and, you know, they're exposed to panel discussions and workshops on unconscious bias and things of that nature. And then they take what they are learning back to their building, and they help the building to navigate diversity issues and so on and so forth. So that's just one model that exists. We also did a little benchmarking with Ole and Tangi, which looks similar to Lakota. And they actually have a really great framework on their website and so on and so forth. And then they've identified an individual to be their diversity coordinator for the district, as well, as Lakota has done that as well. So those are just some ideas and ways that different districts have.
Well, and honestly, none of this, we can't do or accomplish any of this until we start talking. And I appreciate the fact that, that you're both willing to keep that, to get people involved and ask the tough questions, because we've got to keep that dialogue and keep going on it.
Exactly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And one last thing for those in the audience. We've had several requests for records for the breakdown of our staff. Dr. Kessling is going to do a presentation. We're moving him or her up to December, so at our December board meeting, I think you saw from the stats, it's not very diverse. But her and Darrell attended a lot of meetings since, and we are starting to get a plan in place that Chris Lynn and Monica will help us. So we're excited about what we can do, so.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll move into reports from employee organizations. Do I have anybody from certificated or licensed? Do we have any reports from classified? Anybody from school-related organizations? We'll move into community communications. I know we have two of our newly-elect Corrigan Township trustees that are here that want to speak, and we also have a resident. So Rich McBay, you want to talk on the election, and it looks like our five-year forecast.
Well, it's a blessing to be here tonight, especially Dr. Turner and Morrison. Compelling presentation you've made. I've done a lot of work, working in Procter and Gamble, and, you know, it's amazing, when you, you ask people what's going on, and they tell you, you find some things out. You know, it's taking the time to listen to what people have on their minds and then dealing with it. I know that this is important, and this is the first step, and I appreciate what you've done. I also can tell you from my own personal experience that living in, starting up a plant in a deep south, and hiring a workforce that was 40% African-American in the middle of the south, it created a lot of learning. Okay, it was probably the most learning that I've ever gone through as, as a manager. As a result of it, my skills were better, what we did was better. Okay, the whole learning process is something that the leadership team, I encourage you to embrace. You need to embrace this stuff and live with it, and you'll find out that your lives will be better because of it. You will be a better person, you know, not that you're not a good person now, but you will be a better person when you understand how to relate and work effectively with people who are different. So it's a great start, and I'm glad I was here tonight. And if I can help you in the future, just let me know, because I do have passion. We had a last election, and I want to compliment people in this room who, who helped. A lot of them are here, and some are outside in the meeting. We had like a 15% turnout this election, greater than the last trustee election and school board election. So we were doing something right, and we appreciate everything you've done. And as a result of that, we've got two new, two new board members and an existing board member who are, who is going to be here at the school, and I know that they'll do well for us. We have two trustees here tonight who are going to make some comments, and, and I know both of them, and, and I think that, I know that they will be inclusive in how they work with the school board, and that's important, as you well know. I'd like to thank Michael and Chris, because their terms are coming to an end, and I may not speak here in the next meeting. Michael, it's, I know you've done a lot of good work, and we all appreciate that. Chris and I go back for some time. Chris, you've been on the board eight years or 12? What has it been?
Two and a half terms.
Two and a half terms. And Chris is, you know, he's got this rap as this conservative, and he is conservative, and so am I. And one of the things as a conservative, sometimes you, you get labeled that you don't care about students, and I know that's not the case. You could be conservative and care about students, and Chris has done that. And our district is better off because, and it's better off because of all of you on the board here, and I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
I didn't have a chance to, to attend the last meeting and look at the five-year forecast, but I have looked at it since, Treasury Wells. And so I want to make a couple of comments about it. And I see it's in the minutes, so you, you guys did vote on it, 5-0. What I didn't see was, and I haven't watched the film, so I don't know, but I didn't see you talking about much rather than we just approve it again. And I would just say, I want to point out some top-line things to the board, that, you know, it, it's a five-year forecast, as you all know, but the important thing to me is in the year 2022, which is four years from now, we're spending $12 million more a year than we're taking in. And the treasurer has said, you know, we've got work to do, but we do have work to do to, to deal with that. $12 million is, you know, we, we get, I think we make maybe 40, we bring in $40 million a year in property taxes, about, maybe. So 12 by, divided by 40, is about 30%. So if we don't do anything, you know, to pay for this, you've got, you're talking to residents about a 25 or 30% tax increase. And we just had, you know, a situation where we, we had a bond approved, and people aren't expecting a 25 to 30% tax increase. So we've got a lot of work to do. And I know, I know Treasury Wells and the staff are working on this, but we do need the board, I'm not saying that you're not deeply involved, but you need to have some more discussion about this, around how do we do this, what are the strategic decisions we're making, that to avoid, you know, a 25% tax increase being presented to the voters within, it would have to be a couple of years if you're going to try to do it. And the other thing I would say in this is that Treasury Wells would like to have like a 25% reserve. If you're spending $100 million, you've got $25 million you can have as a reserve, and cheating, you can have that. I mean, this budget now is down to like minus three. We have, we have significant financial issues to work through, and I'm kind of surprised that that wasn't reflected in the minutes last time. So I'll, I'll bring it up here, and, and I'll come back, and we'll talk about that in the future. The other thing I was going to say is, we have now consolidated, we are in process of consolidating these elementary schools and going from five to three, and I expect to see some savings from this stuff, you know? And it's not clear to me, you know, how those savings are plowed into this, this forecast. So my challenge is to you guys to take a look at that hard line, you know, and say, what is it we can do? What are we going to do differently to bring more of those savings to the bottom line? With that, I'll conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. I will say, we missed you at the last finance committee meeting. The whole meeting was about the five-year forecast, and Amy did a good job trying to get the dialogue going with the members of the finance team to come up with ways to address this. So yes, we've got a lot of, a lot of dialogue here, and I know this team's been working, we're continually, and Todd can speak on this, but continually looking at ways to save money, but, but still be able to provide the best education possible. But you're right, it's, when you say 2022, and you said four years, it's like, it doesn't seem possible, but it is, and we'll have to start long before that. So Dan Unger, relationships between Corrigan Township and Northwest School District.
Thank you, Pam. I'm going to alter my comments a little bit. I did not realize another trustee-elect was going to be here, so I'm going to avoid any discussion of any township business, even though the election is not certified yet. One of the benefits you have as a board of five is two of you can talk to each other, but I don't think you want two trustees in the same room, even though the election's not certified yet. It'll, the Hamilton County Board of Elections is having a meeting on Wednesday to certify the votes, so I'll.
But you're not sworn in until January, so.
I still want to watch out for that, as I always, as I always did while I was, as I always did while I was here.
You're fine.
I wanted to congratulate you on your reelection, and I wanted to congratulate Joe and Mark. I see Mark back there in the back, so congratulations to you. I'm looking forward to a different type of relationship than what's existed in the past with the trustees and the school district. I also want to thank Jeff Ritter and Mike Enderhys for their service. It was probably not in the best interest of the, the school board at, at times, but anybody who's willing to put themselves out for election and serve in a public office, there is challenges there, and so I, I commend them. I, I'd also like to commend Michael and Chris for your service on the board as you go off of the board. In my 21 years of involvement here, I, I missed two meetings, and I was, my last eight years, I was on the board, and, and things had gone on for a long time, and it was with your election in, in 2013, and, you know, we saw the changes that led the five of us to getting to a point where we were able to pass a bond issue and start the largest single modernization program in what is the 58-year history of the combined Northwest School District. So congratulations on your service. I, I don't think any of us have seen the interview, but congratulations to you. And, and with that, I'm looking forward to a lot different level of communication with the school board moving down the road, so we have a seat at each other's table to discuss a variety of issues. I will leave the room before Raj speaks, just to avoid any of that, but, but congratulations to everyone who was involved in the process. And hey, Darrell, I didn't get to say hi to you on the way in, so how you doing?
Hey, Dan. Seems like just yesterday you were up here, and I wanted to congratulate you on winning, running a very efficient campaign, and, and winning very easily. I think Dan was the, the absolute model school board member in the sense that he always put the balance of the interest of the children and the taxpayers on an equal pedestal. And because of that, our tax rates now are lower, reappraisal is going to raise tax rates here in January, but we were building three new schools, and you're paying less in taxes now than people were four years ago. And so, and Dan was a big part of that, and Jim and Pam, and Bob and Mike. So looking forward to you being a trustee. I live in Greene, so I can't vote in your election, Dan, but I will be keeping a very close eye on you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Dan, I'd just like to say congratulations on, on your win. I, I enjoyed serving with you on the board for a couple of years, and we've been friends for a long time, and I'm sure we'll be working together in the future as well. And I think your election is going to be a positive for both the community and the town, the community and school district. The community, the school district is a big part of the community, and I, I think having somebody with a background on both would be very helpful.
Thank you, Michael. Thanks, Bob. I appreciate that. Okay, thank you very much, everyone.
I just want to thank the present board for your dedicated service to this community with the leadership of Pam, and this North West School District is fantastic. And, and being elected the new members, and, and the school board is going to be a great school board in our community. Also, I want to thank Pam, and Bob, and Jim for helping me to win this campaign. I also want to thank the teachers, the bus drivers, all the staffs who live in me and voted for me to be a trustee for the Corrigan Township. I was here about two meetings ago. I mentioned about, I came from a small village, poor village. My father never went to school, don't know how to read and write. But one thing he told us, all I can give you, the best education I can give you. Sure enough, he got the best education. And me, my brother, got a great education. This is a country of American dream. I believed in it. And these things we need to teach our children, the American dreams. If you believe, whatever you could be, whatever you want to be, this is the only country will make it happen. And they start from the school. Teach the young children the dream. I'm a big proponent of the education. I will do anything to work with the school board to bring the school, our school district the one of the best in the nation. And we will have a fantastic board. Dan Unger, he got a lot of bad experience working the school board. And me, being in the passion and the education, we will do anything possible to build up a fantastic school district. I, I just want to assure this. Once again, I want to thank you for this. One thing I learned from this meeting, that I'm going to impose this in the Corrigan Township meetings, people can come and talk. There's no time clock here, five-minute clock. There is no way you had to write it down what you want to say a day ahead before noon time. I just learned so much from this meeting, and this is going to be like a Corrigan Township trustee meeting. Please count on that. I want anything I can do, work with this school board, I'll be there. I want to break the wall in the, I learned in the past, there was a wall between the trustees and the school board. I'm going to break that wall, and there's going to be a communication between the school board and the trustees. That's a promise I'll make today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Raj. I just want to.
We actually do have a five-minute rule, but we have had such little contention that it's very, you know, we really haven't had much need to rely on it, you know?
Raj, I just want to say, for the first time, I am so excited about the potential between the school district and the trustees, and it's going to do nothing but make this community stronger, that we're actually going to have a partnership, and the sky's the limit. So I am thrilled from the moment you walked in and Rich McBay introduced you, I knew then you were the guy. So congratulations very much.
Hey, Raj, if I can just make one suggestion, I've already talked to Dan about this. And again, I don't live in Corrigan. I'm the one board member up here that lives in Greene. The top third of Greene Township is part of the Northwest School District, and we have several precincts in Springfield Township. And believe it or not, I think even a half a precinct from Butler County in our school district. But Raj, if you could move your meetings from six o'clock to one dinnertime to a time when people can actually come, I think that would be really a good thing. It was almost like the meetings in the past, and I think it's been this way for years. I don't know, Rich, you probably know, but I mean, why would you schedule a meeting at the dinner hour? So that would be my, my one suggestion to you. And the thing too about speaking and filling out cards in advance and getting clearance, that, that just didn't strike me as a good, good thing. But anyway, good luck to you, and congratulations on a great campaign that you ran.
Okay, Todd?
All right, first item. First item is a fiscal item, financial reports of the treasurer. The treasurer and superintendent recommend the board of education approve the financial reports as listed.
So moved to second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions regarding the financial reports of the treasurer? Chris? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is certificated licensed personnel. It is certificated licensed personnel retirements and resignations. Superintendent recommends the board of education approve the certificated licensed personnel retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved to second.
Moved in second. Questions regarding the certificated and licensed personnel? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is classified retirements and resignations. The superintendent recommends the board of education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved to second.
Moved in second. Questions or comments regarding classified retirement and resignation?
As the only board member who has a child who rides a bus, I just want to call, just bring up the fact that his bus driver, Michael Jacobs, is retiring, and I wish him well in his retirement.
Anyone else? Okay, Chris. Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is a fiscal item, then and now certificates over $3,000. The superintendent and treasurer recommend the board of education authorize the payments over $3,000, requiring a then and now certificate as listed.
So moved to second.
Moved in second. Questions or comments regarding then and now certificates? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is a fiscal item, resolution of blankets certification. Superintendent and treasurer recommend the board of education approve the resolution of blanket certification as listed.
So moved to second.
Moved in second. Questions regarding the resolution of the blanket certification? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is a general business item. It is a resolution to declare students impractical to transport. Superintendent recommends the board of education approve the resolution to declare students impractical to transport as listed.
So moved to second.
Moved in second. Questions regarding the impractical transportation? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is donations to Northwest Local School District. Colrain Elementary School PTA made a generous donation to the library of a new iPad with a value of $750. The superintendent recommends the board of education approve the donation to the Northwest Local School District as listed.
So moved to second.
Moved in second. Any questions?
I'd just like to thank the Colrain PTA for doing this, and thank all of the PTAs for what they do for the schools.
Absolutely, PTAs. We could not, we could not keep moving if we didn't have the support of all of our PTAs and our booster groups, so I wanna thank all of them.
I would just like to note that in the letter that was attached with this, there was also a donation for Pleasant Run Elementary. Chandra Brown is donating books to the Pleasant Run Elementary School with an estimated value of $209.23, and we thank her as well.
Anyone else? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is vendor contracts. The superintendent and treasurer recommend the board of education approve the vendor contracts as listed.
So moved to second.
Moved in second. Questions on the vendor contracts? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is a resolution for Pippin Turn Lane property dedication. Superintendent recommends the board of education authorize the dedication of the real property as listed.
So moved to second.
Moved in second. Questions regarding the property dedication?
Where is that Pleasant Run there coming up?
Widening the road so there'll be a turn lane, right in front across from the cemetery.
Anyone else? Okay, Chris? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is certificated licensed personnel. It is certificated licensed personnel items. The superintendent recommends the board of education approve the certificated licensed personnel items as listed.
So moved to second.
Been moved in second. Questions or comments? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is classified personnel items. The superintendent recommends the board of education approve the classified personnel items as listed.
So moved to second.
Moved in second on the classified personnel items. Are there any questions? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is the 2017-2018 Gifted Education Identification and Service Plan. Superintendent recommends the board of education approve the 2017-2018 Gifted Identification and Service Plan as listed.
So moved to second.
Moved in second. Questions regarding the Gifted Education Identification and Service Plan? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is from Student Services. It is an out-of-state extended athletic field trip request. Colrain High School Boys Basketball Annual Trip to Detroit, Michigan for a holiday basketball tournament, the 27th through the 30th. Please say a prayer for no snow as they travel up north. Superintendent recommends the board of education approve the out-of-state extended athletic field trip as listed.
So moved to second.
Moved in second. Questions? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is miscellaneous, is resolution for retention of outside legal counsel. The superintendent recommends the board of education approve the resolution approving legal services as listed. This is a civil rights legal matter that when we had prior attorneys, they were dealing with. Instead of paying new attorneys to do it, we just wanna finish it up. It's just basically being removed. It's-
So moved to second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions? Did you get them, Chris? Motion passes five to zero.
My update is basically about one item, and that is House Bill 216. This is, in order to get things done, legislators will put together House bills that are of personal interest to them. This one puts more of the control back in school districts' hands and takes it away from the state, which is why I bring it up. One of the things that it takes care of is it's called education deregulation. So the state requirements for assessments for our kids, K through 12, is a lot larger than what federal requirements are. So this is a plan that would reduce it to federal minimums, which would reduce about eight to nine tests, so there wouldn't be so much assessing from day to day, month to month, year to year. It also eliminates the need to report kindergarten assessments and EMIS, eliminates the kindergarten diagnostic assessments for reading, writing, and math. Other things that it deals with is it eliminates requirement that districts where less than 5% of students have scored below grade level on the kindergarten assessment receive no letter grade in the K through three literacy. The K through three literacy grade is very convoluted. It takes a lot to figure out how you're getting it and what you're getting it, but it just takes some of the restrictions out of there. The other thing that it helps is with new hires who are classified, it gives us the ability to have a one-year contract followed by three two-year contracts, so you can make sure that your employees are meeting the requirements of what they do, instead of just locking you in to them going to a continuing contract right away. So that's a good thing also. Teacher evaluations will change. We talked about lower, or morale being low. Part of that is the value-added piece. What will change is that each district, from what we're hearing, will be allowed to develop your own teacher evaluation system, but that student growth measures will be embedded in it and not a separate task. So that's an important piece. But it also changes, we had a couple incidents last year where, when you get to January, February, and March, very difficult to find subs. We ended up displacing a class at Colrain L., a fifth grade, so we had 25 kids, and so we put them in other classes, and it brought the class sizes up, because by law, you have to have a certified teacher in there. This gives us more leniency, and you know, you never plan, and the worst thing you can hear as a parent is, my kid's a fourth, fifth grader, maternity leave. Well, natural things like that happen, but the later in the year it gets, the more difficult it gets to find subs. We are fighting with other districts to get special education subs, math subs, science subs. This gives us some leadway where if we have a good teacher, where our instructional specialist can work with them, we can leave them in for a 60-day period, which wasn't allowed before. So what was happening is, school districts would put somebody in for four days, remove them for the fifth day, and then move them back in. Well, that's not good for kids. So at least it gives us some leadway on this. So it's just something I want you to be aware of. It's something that I'm gonna be more proactive with in January. I think the people sitting out here, whether you realize it or not, and I'm not talking about my administrative staff, I'm talking about the parents, by you being vocal with the legislatures and me forwarding things that you could write or you could say to them, we have to do a better job. I have to do a better job of educating you on what's out there, because sometimes it's not what's best for kids. So I think we can take a big stance. I wanna start community meetings where I'm gonna go out and talk about these issues, but there has to be more of a push. The reason House Bill 216 got through was a bunch, a bunch of what they call sports moms. They were the ones hauling them back and forth to football practice, back and forth to soccer practice, back and forth to volleyball. They got mad at some of the regulations for testing and that, and so they brought it to a legislator, met with them, and that's why this House bill has come forward. It's a grassroots movement. So that's what we need from more of our parents. So I will talk more and more as we go through these, but House Bill 216 is a good thing. It puts more local control back in the districts and takes power away from the state. So just wanted to bring that up tonight.
Thanks for bringing that up, Todd. I just wanna add a couple thanks for, first of all, it's actually Senate bill, but that's there.
Yeah, I passed it in Senate.
At its, the next meeting, the next hearing we're gonna have on, it's December 6th, which is a Wednesday in Columbus.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, before we go into community comments, first of all, I wanna thank everybody that's here in the audience. I know this is probably the week, especially with it being a holiday coming up, there's 50 million things you could be doing at home, so I appreciate that you take the time and you're here. I appreciate if you've been a part of any committees, that you continue to do so, and that we keep the dialogue moving forward. So I wanna thank you, and if you could share with the ones that left, you know, that we truly do appreciate everyone here and participating. This is the part of the meeting, well, first of all, you hear us whip through all these and voting and quick and whatever. Just to let you know, we get the agenda the prior week, so we have time to look at all this. We read it all to see what we're voting on, if we have any questions at all. I know there's many times I'll pick up the phone and call Todd, or call Amy, or whatever, and the fellow board members do the same thing. So if there's any kind of issues, we try to work them out and get the questions ahead of time. So that's why it kinda seems like it just, we don't just show up here and everybody votes the same way. I mean, there is dialogue, and we do look into what we're voting on. So I wanted to let everybody know that. Now, this is the part of the meeting that unlike, at the beginning of the meeting where you have to fill out a card if you wanna speak, this is just, if there's been anything that's been discussed during the meeting, if you have any questions about it or a comment, you can just raise your hand and ask from there. So is there anything from tonight's meeting that anybody wants clarification, or has any questions? Okay. Okay.
Yeah, so we need to widen it. I think I've talked to you before. We are trying to transport, no, we have some dangerous situations coming across Kemper Road and Pippin Road. The whole widening part is just, it's mandatory because of traffic to do a turning lane, so we do have to widen it. But I've already talked to Chris, told Chris that you were gonna be at board meetings, so we are more than willing to look at that because it scares me to death when kids are crossing Kemper to get in that subdivision, then weave through the subdivision and get to the back end. And now we have 780 coming to Pleasant Run and another 900 Pleasant Run now, so we are well aware of that. I've told the, Megan and-
Skanska.
Skanska what we need to do, and so we are trying to work with transportation. We are in the process of looking at how many more kids we might be able to bus, because the key is, we lose our mid-days. Since we're going to all-day kindergarten, we won't have the mid-days, so hopefully it gives us more options to get kids to school instead of less options. But yeah, that's-
Okay, anybody else? I know we have an executive session to go into, but before that, we'll go ahead and do board member comments. Chris?
Well, Pam, first of all, wanted to congratulate the Detsel Machine for coming in first again.
Thank you, sir.
Out of your number of races, you've always come in first, Pam. I told the other candidates, don't worry about coming in first, worry about coming in second and third, because Pam will come in first. And so I was right on that, so congratulations. Wanted to congratulate Mr. Gilbert in the back. I don't see Mr. Yashimura tonight, but Mark, it's gonna be an adventure for you, a good one, and certainly about six weeks from now, you'll be sitting right here in my seat. So good luck to you, sir. And quickly, just wanted to say, I was at the game Friday night up at Mason, and the Colrain Cardinal Football Machine got a little revenge back on St. X for what happened earlier this year, and moves on to the state quarterfinals. I'm not sure I'm gonna go to that game.
Semi.
Yeah, that was last week, the semifinals. And I'm not sure I'm gonna make it to Springfield, but gonna try to get to the finals if they make it that far.
Michael?
Just wanna thank Voters Northwest for serving for four years. Obviously, I'll have one more meeting, and congratulate Pam on coming in first. Would congratulate Joe, if he was here. Mark, congratulations. And I also hope that, well, I'd like to congratulate Raj, I didn't get a chance to when he was here, but also when we go to exact, would it be permissible to bring in board member elect, so he gets kind of a head start on things?
I'm not sure we're doing-
We've done that before, Pam. We brought you in.
I know the one part we can't until he's sworn in, what we're gonna discuss late, without you in.
Right. I mean, we haven't, I'm aware of it.
We-
Just in my time.
Well, I was, while I was here two years ago, I was sat up here and learned how to use the computer, but I was not allowed to go into executive-
Yeah, I don't think-
Right, yeah, that part, yes, definitely.
Yeah, yeah, I think we'll get you up here at, yeah, the next meeting.
But I think even executive session, if we have, right now, we do not on the 20th. That would be something we could work on. Amy and I were discussing that.
Okay.
So, but for training for Mark, and if we get Joe here on the-
Yeah, we get Joe.
Then, yeah, they can sit up and see how to operate the systems.
Okay.
Let Mark here go down there.
Yeah.
Go through it.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
Oh, I just wish our football team well in the state semifinals and finals.
I'd like to congratulate the three teachers tonight, Ashley, Richard, Sarah, for their achievements. Thanks to the doctors for running the diversity plan for us. We're all excited about that, so thank you for that. It was great to see the trustees get elected. Hopefully we'll have a closer relationship, and it'll be better for both parties. I'd like to just reiterate what they said about the football team. It was an awesome game Friday night, and hopefully it'll do well again this weekend. And Mark, congratulations. We're looking forward to seeing you up here with us.
Jim?
Yeah, I just wanted to kinda echo that. Congratulations to the football team. It was a great game, and congratulations to the trustees, the new trustees, and I'm sure it's gonna be a lot better. And congratulations to Mark back there. We'll see you in six weeks up here. And I wanted to congratulate two of the girls from the Colrain High School cross-country team. They made it to the state meet. Shelby Truitt and Madeline Frye, who just signed her national letter of intent to run at KU. And then to congratulate Danielle Mahafee, volleyball player at Northwest. She signed to play at Tennessee. And congratulations to all of them, and-
Okay, well, I've got all kinds of things. First, I wanna start out, we have a C- First, I want to start out, we have a CSTEM Teacher of the Year and a CSTEM Supervisor of the Year Administrator, and Julie Norris from Colerain Middle School, and Lesi Silvernagle. And what was neat is they were recognized at UC Davis in California. And what makes it even cooler is the professor that opened up this conference is a Northwest High School alumni, and Dr. Jennifer Curtis. And she, when they interviewed her, she talks back that when she thought about getting ready to go to college, she had a counselor at Northwest High School who encouraged her to pursue engineering. And back then, which was in 1979, there weren't many women going into engineering. And because of a counselor here in our district, you know, she pursued her dreams and is just doing amazing. So, it was really neat to have two teachers from our district and then an alumni from our district all at the same place, and the two that received the national awards, I think we're all very, very proud of. As we mentioned, several of us were at the Ohio School Board Conference, I guess, was it last week? And one of my favorite parts is the Student Achievement Fair. We were well represented, represented, we had students from White Oak Middle School with the robotics math intervention program, and the kids did an awesome job. They were able to, you know, people were coming up, and I loved how they interacted. So, I want to congratulate that whole team from White Oak Middle School, they did a great job. Then also, Butler Tech was well represented, and we had a former Northwest student, a graduate, and he was actually in the Project Life booth for Butler Tech, and he was presenting about how that program prepared him for, once he graduated. So, the district was well represented in Columbus, and it was very, very nice to see. And then the other thing, Todd, did you want to mention the Momentum Award?
I can.
Okay.
We've done so much, I was going to, but we've done so much, publicize it, and I've got all this other stuff.
Yeah, but this is good stuff, so.
We, as a district, received the Momentum Award, and that is for continued excellence and all students achieving success. So, we're based on five subgroups, so help me out here, Darryl, or not the subgroups, and I know we don't like subgroups, but that's what we talk about at every meeting we go to through the state. And so, if we want to call them groups, the groups are economically disadvantaged, African-American, gifted, lowest 20%, and overall. We got an A in each of those groups. We are one of the few districts to get an A in that group. So, we got a letter from the state, hopefully you've seen it through Twitter, Facebook, email, website, anything else, and it's recognition that we have staff that are making sure that all students succeed. It's not just your top kids doing well, it's not just your middle kids doing well, it's the lowest 20%, the middle group, and your high group. It's all white, it's all African-American, it's all economically disadvantaged, and it's all of our students. And the best part about that is, you know, when you look at our report card, and we did a report card presentation, that we had As and value-added and the groups that were underneath that. But, if you look at our overall report card, and the amount of As, Bs, Cs, and Bs and Fs that we received, you might think, what are we doing? You can't just take something that has been going down for two or three years and automatically flip a switch and it just turns around. We need kids currently to have more than one year's growth. With our As and value-added, we are getting more than one year's growth. We are getting a year and a half to two years' growth. That is the important piece here, and it is for every group that falls under that category. So, it is a tremendous award. Locally, I think Oak Hills, ourselves, Lakota, Sycamore, we're really up there with these districts who don't have funding issues because they have money out the wazoo. But, it says a lot about our staff, it says a lot about their dedication. The letter clearly states that out, and it also says that we are headed in the right direction. So, it is an award that we're very proud of. We have tried to post it everywhere we can. I hope this is the first you're hearing about it. If it is, we need to do a better job, because it is exciting. So, yes, the Momentum Award is fantastic.
Not to put you on the spot, but I knew you were going to talk about it, so I didn't write it all down. Okay, with that, I'm going to take a motion to move into executive session. We will not be, we will not be taking any action this evening, correct?
Correct.
So, you're more than welcome to stay. We're going to go into executive session, we're going to come back out, we're going to adjourn. So, that's totally up to you, but if I can have a motion to move into executive session?
Second.
Okay.
Do we need to mention the reason? Do we need to state the reason? Not allowed?
You want to. We'll move into, the board will approve a motion to move into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, as well as the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual. Did we all, we took that?
We did.
Okay. So, we'll go ahead and vote. Motion passes five to zero. We will move into executive session. Want everybody to have a safe and happy Thanksgiving.